There is a motion at the desk. The clerk will report the motion.
Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Loon moves that the rule there and be suspended and an urgency be declared and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House File Number 1 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
I recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Loon, to that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Yes, I move that the rules of the House be suspended so that we can consider special session, House File 1, the Education Omnibus Bill, and I would ask for your support.
Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the Loon motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, House File Number 1.
Second reading. There are no amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, House File Number 1.
Third reading. I recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Loon, to introduce the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members, and I am very pleased to be able to present this compromise education omnibus bill. If members will recall from the end of session, the education omnibus bill that was passed but then subsequently vetoed was a $400 million increase over base in education funding, everything from early education through grade 12. The bill that I'm presenting to you today is an additional $125 million on top of that $400, so $525 million over base. The predominant area where that additional $125 million went was more money on the formula. So, all pupils are going to benefit from this bill. Every school district will benefit, and our formula increase, I'm very pleased to say, is 2% each year of the upcoming biennium. That is a larger increase in formula than we've been able to do for our schools for a long time, and I know that they are very pleased that we are able to do that for them. The other, and that's about $63.4 million of the $125 million increase, additional areas where more funding was devoted from that additional money, $17.5 million in additional early learning scholarships, an additional $10 million in Head Start, $10 million in compensatory grants, an additional $9.5 million for American Indian Education Aid, and I'll talk more about that in a moment, one-time money, so just for the upcoming biennium, of $5 million for our tribal contract schools, $4 million increase for Northside Achievement Zone in the St. Paul Promise Neighborhood, just over $1 million for education partnership grants, and these are much like the St. Paul Promise Neighborhood and Northside Achievement Zone programs, but they are in greater Minnesota. A little over $3.1 million to extend English language learner formula eligibility from six years to seven years, and that will take place in fiscal year 17. Some assistance to the Owatonna School District, which had a sort of a snafu with their referendum and some poor advice on that, and we're going to resolve that problem for the school district. Some additional money for the department to implement the new English language learner program and to help with their administrative costs. No other changes to the bill that was passed at the end of regular session were made. So, all of the policy changes that were adopted in conference committee report for the bill that expended $400 million were not made, and I must say, I think that is a great credit to the House and the Senate, education members and the conferees. We worked actually very well in that conference committee, produced a very good bill, and none of those changes were opened up and rehashed during the negotiations. So, it's a very solid bill. You know, I'm really pleased to say that 65% of the new funding in our education bill is going to be distributed through the General Education Formula. So, again, every pupil in the state of Minnesota is going to benefit, and we are sending over $450 million in new money to our schools through the per-pupil formula, extended instructional time revenue for those children who need additional time to master the material. We're going to give schools more money to provide that additional help and time that they need. Increasing money for concurrent enrollment. This has become a very popular and increasingly used program where children can get college credits while they're in school, but we have not been fully funding the program. We're going to boost that program by $4 million. Increase in Q Comp, so more schools, all the schools on the waiting list for Q Comp will be able to avail themselves of that program. More school readiness aid, American Indian Education Aid. As I mentioned, we had a, or have a program currently called Success for the Future. It's a grant program that schools can compete for, and if your school has 20 or more Native American students, you could compete for those grants. But it wasn't enough. It didn't help all of our schools with Native American students, and if you look at how those students are doing, many of them are smack dab in the middle of the achievement gap that we all are, find so unacceptable in a state like Minnesota that we would have so many children of color and our Native American students not achieving. So, we have converted that program into an aid formula that will flow to every Native American student in Minnesota schools and to help them achieve and become successful in their educational attainment. School facilities aid. You know, there was a task force that studied school facilities and how districts are able to pay for the maintenance on their school buildings and their upkeep, very important. We haven't treated all districts the same. 25 of the largest districts have been able to provide for the funding and the upkeep of their buildings, and the rest of the schools in Minnesota have had to really struggle to get adequate funding for that. So, we are embarking down the road of trying to equalize that, and especially important for schools in greater Minnesota, which have suffered really at that, it's how we have treated them disproportionately in that system. So, very glad we can move that forward. Early childhood. Anyone who believes that early childhood education is important, and as we look to eliminate and really prevent the achievement gap when it starts in its earliest age, should view this as a huge victory in the funding and the dedication that we're providing in this bill. There's an 86% increase in early learning scholarships. About $104 million will be provided in early learning scholarships for the upcoming biennium. A 125% increase in school readiness money. Again, that's money that is, really goes to preschool, that is operated at our school districts for at-risk three- and four-year-olds. A 40% increase in early learning, early literacy programs and reading corps. So, and that as well as increases in ECFE, or Early Childhood Family Education. If you add all of those programs together, a 60% increase in our investment in early learning over the previous biennium, 60%, that's a significant amount, and it will go a great ways towards, again, helping us eliminate that achievement gap and really start it, stop it before it starts, before those children get to kindergarten, and so they are going to enter school ready to learn and on par with their peers. As I mentioned, 2% each year of the formula, if you average that out, is about $388 per pupil in increased revenue for the biennium. And, you know, we did that in a way to help our schools fund their important initiatives locally, but we did it also by giving them more local control and flexibility. The additional funding in that is not coming with very expensive mandated new programs or with new strings from the state. We are really trying to allow our schools to do what they do best by working with their teachers, with their parents, with the administrators and that, to craft the programs that work best for the students in their schools and to achieve success in the goals that they have established for themselves under the World's Greatest Workforce Initiative from previous biennium. We also have extended, extended time revenue. Has never been something that we have offered to charter schools. We are now embarking down a path of equalizing our charter schools and making, allowing them to be available for that funding. Many of them do run longer program days and extended help for their students to ensure their success, and they should have additional funding for that purpose. The early learning scholarships and the early learning initiatives that we're doing is very important in that we have preserved our assistance to those children most at risk, those children that show greatest return from this assistance, while preserving parental choice. Parents can choose a quality program of their choosing, and we know from research that that's incredibly important, to engage parents in these decisions and make sure that they become real partners with educators in ensuring that their children are learning, are being successful, and will have a successful education. And I'll just mention some of the reforms and policy initiatives. Again, these were in the bill that we passed in regular session. We did not make any changes to them, but great strides forwards in reforming and streamlining how we will license teachers. We've asked the Board of Teaching to promulgate rules to streamline and make that process a little more transparent and work better. We're encouraging reciprocity agreements with adjoining states so we can help get more qualified teacher candidates. We know that we have a teacher shortage. It is severe in some areas of the state, but continuing to grow in certain areas of licensure, and we need to do a better job of getting more qualified teacher candidates into our schools. We are reducing our reliance on standardized testing. I hear this frequently when meeting with parents and educators and others, that we test too much, and it's not necessarily working to the benefit of our children. So, we are rolling back some mandated testing that is going to provide some relief and offer more instructional time for students. We are going to limit the placement of students and student teachers with teachers that are on professional improvement plans, again, with the goal of making sure that students and those doing their student teaching are really getting quality instruction. We are going to allow the use of Q Comp money to get hiring bonuses or added compensation for effective teachers who are willing to take hard to staff positions. We know this has been a challenging area for many of our schools, and we really need some of our best teachers to take those classroom assignments and help our children learn. So, schools will now be able to use some of their Q Comp money to encourage teachers and to offer bonuses for that. We are asking schools to prioritize their use of staff development revenue for their teacher evaluation and development systems. Very important, and it's really the purpose of that funding. And finally, you know, we have had a real increase in the number of students who want to get some of their college credits while they're in high school. It helps reduce the cost of college education if they can get, some students can get up to two years' worth of college where they're in their high school years, but we've had difficulty for a number of years with some of those credits actually transferring. And so, I think we have now, we've got the language in this bill, as there was also in the higher education bill, to make sure that if your child is doing PSEO or college in the school through a Minskew institution, that those credits will transfer, will get all of the credit for those classes that they're taking. So, you know, I'm just, I'm very pleased with this bill, and I have a number of people I'd like to thank, both nonpartisan and partisan staff. I think I'll save the specifics for my closing remarks, but I also just want to thank leadership both of the House and Senate, and also the Governor and Lieutenant Governor Smith for working with us and creating what I think is a very good bill. It does great things for our students. It's going to help us close the achievement gap. It's going to make sure that our schools are not going to be in the difficult situation of having to increase class sizes or lower teachers. They are going to be adequately funded. We are going to see some great reforms in terms of how we license teachers. We're going to reduce mandated testing, and we are going to move forward in our initiatives to help, again, make sure that every child in Minnesota gets the world-class education that they deserve. So, I thank the members, and I would hope you would support the bill.
The gentleman from Ramsey, Representative Mariani.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. And before I begin my comments, I do want to say there is something, there is something powerful about all of us being squeezed into one room, and hopefully, yeah, I was about to say. Hopefully, we won't be here too long so that the power element changes later, but the power here is really about the voices of Minnesota being heard in intimate space, and it's a real privilege, even as we disagree on a number of things, for us to be able to articulate that with one another in this close space. Let me just say, this is a good bill, and I want to urge members to support this bill. I want to tell you a very quick story. Earlier this week, I was at Minneapolis School District. I was invited to come down and say a few words as that school district affirmed, recognized, and awarded close to 300 students. Most of these students are low-income students, many of them are first-generation immigrant students who came to our schools, many of them not speaking English as their first language or their dominant language at home and in their communities. And these close to 300 students were awarded two things that we made possible here, beginning in 2009, and then with Representative Norton's bill last year with the World Multilingual Bilingual Seals legislation, which members confers post-secondary college credits. So, there are articulation agreements happening with Minskew system in this regard. And these students were awarded for, and recognized for having not only a high-level, rigorous academic command of their native language, but also in the English language. This is the future. This is the future of our nation. It's the future of our state. It's the kind of forward-thinking that we need to be about if Minnesota is going to be able to maintain its position as a good, solid, prosperous place in this world, and it begins with the laws that we pass here and the vision that we have right through in our E-12 system. I want to thank Representative Norton for her vision in helping us shape that last year. And members, I share that story to tell you very quickly that what we do here matters so profoundly, so importantly, in terms of opportunity. You can't educate another person. All we can do is provide the opportunity for another person to be educated. This is about providing opportunities. This bill also, as a whole, does that. This bill is a good example of when special session does go well. You know, we can argue about whether we should have been here or not. Representative Thiessen articulated earlier, you know, that the offer was put on the table during regular, that would have gotten to us where we're at right here with this bill. But the point is, we're here right now, and this is a good bill, and we should support it. This bill, when it came off the floor of the House, was not a good bill. It was a weak bill. It was so weak that even members of the Majority Caucus got up on the floor, on the record, and said, "Boy, I really hope this bill gets better when it comes back." And in fact, it did get better when it got back, but it still wasn't the good, strong bill that it needed to be. It is now. The better, and I'll just speak very quickly to a few things that are reason for me to support it, obviously has to do with what we're doing in terms of just our general funding of our schools. You know, members, we can get up and do all sorts of, you know, our rhetorizing about how we're just going to free up schools to do, you know, whatever they can do and, you know, let them just figure things out, and, you know, local control and the whole bit, but frankly, members, if they don't have the resources, they can't do that. We can't make a better education system by laying teachers off, which is what the bill that came off the floor of the House the first time around guaranteed would happen. That has now been greatly minimized, and my tip of the hat to everyone who was involved in that final decision, including Chair Loon during the special session discussions. Members, there was a lot of rhetoric during the regular session. A number of members got up and said, "Hey, we're all about targeting. We want to target public resources." However, that seemed to be pretty much limited to targeting in regards to only one aspect, an important aspect, which had to do with the scholarships. And we were about to leave, on the table, tons of resources that we could wisely use for targeting broadly. I know that sounds, you know, counterintuitive, but that means spending the money in lots of different ways that get directly compared to the unique circumstances and realities that many of our, close to 900,000 students in our public schools face in Minnesota. And so, this bill does a lot of good investment in targeted programs. The early, of course, the early education targeting, I welcome the additional resources on the scholarship, the school readiness program, the promised neighborhoods, not just the Minneapolis and St. Paul, because it shouldn't just be about Minneapolis and St. Paul, but there are half a dozen school districts around the state that are moving into that wraparound, everybody-in-community support for K-12 outcomes. We're going to be investing in those programs through this bill. The Head Start investment has barely been talked about, but these are some of the poor, no, these are the poorest students in our state. And through a program that has multi-generational experience and success, we're going to be able to step up and hopefully get rid of that waiting list that we have in the state. I think these funds does do that. Get rid of our waiting list and create those opportunities for students early on to be able to obtain the benefits of an education through the guided efforts of Head Start. The EL funding, of course, you all know that's near and dear to my heart. We're going to be able to move to the seven-year eligibility cap. We were there, members, well over a dozen years ago, and just at the time when our state faced a large, the largest influx of non-English-speaking students. And by the way, there's 11 million students across the country in our public schools right now whose first language is not English, and that's only going to grow. We want, obviously, to have them to have academic command of English, but we know the path to do that is through also lifting up the tremendous assets they already possess in their native language. So, this bill gets us back up to that seven-year cap. That really helps our school districts. Many of them were cross-subsidizing that work with students because they were so committed to them. This is a real big deal, not just for my school districts, but many, many small school districts around the state. The investment in the BIE, the Bureau of Indian Education, schools is also an untold story. These are probably the most under-resourced schools in our entire state. This bill, through that investment, is going to create much more stronger opportunities for those students. And then, the chair talked about the Q Comp. I wish we could have done more, quite frankly, with Q Comp. I was one who, many, many years ago, opposed Governor Palenney on Q Comp, and then several years ago, especially once the auditor's report came in, began to see the incredible benefits that were coming through the Q Comp program. And so, this bill will allow us at least to get more school districts into the Q Comp funding area. And then, of course, the good policy language in the bill, I will highlight quickly, the out-of-state teacher licensing, streamlining. I think it's a good thing to do, and I'm really glad that we were able to keep that. So, members, it's a good bill. I support it. I urge your support. As I said before, you know, we can come up with all sorts of great ideas, but in the end, and we can, you know, tip our hat to our local school districts and just say, "Oh, yeah, you're great, local control. You all go out and do what you do best." But the end, at the end of the day, our state, a long time ago, said that the business of education is the state's business, and for us to do what some other states have done, just, you know, ignore that it's not the collective responsibility, it's just the responsibility of the locals, and if they happen to have the property tax wealth to be able to provide the opportunities, then fine, and if they don't, well, you know, too bad. That's not who we are as Minnesotans. The governor was right, in my opinion, to say, "Listen, this is so darn important that we need to go to special session to keep and hold to that, that value and those principles that we, as Minnesotans, many generations ago, thankfully, made in terms of our collective responsibility." And so, we can't get there unless we properly resource our schools, unless we properly fund our schools. This bill is 100, maybe 1,000% better in regards, relative to the bill that came off the floor of the House on that issue and on that principle. And so, I urge your support of this bill. I look forward to voting for it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, members.
The gentleman from Nicklewood, Representative Considine.
I just want to get up and thank Governor Dayton for his leadership on this bill. It was his veto and his push that made this bill a good bill, and I will support it. But again, thank you, Governor Dayton.
The lady from Ramsey, Representative Urusso.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For those of you, I seem like a disembodied voice. I'm behind the pillar over here. I'd like to, again, thank the governor for sticking to his guns to bring back the funding that we need to avoid teacher layoffs, or at least reduce them throughout the state, and also the funding for things like the Northside Achievement Zone and the St. Paul Promise Neighborhoods. I remain concerned, some of the policy things that didn't change are still in this. We have actual teacher shortages in some disciplines, some of the sciences and math and industrial tech and special ed, but then we have regional or local shortages in other disciplines that aren't related to the actual numbers of teachers that are available in the state in other disciplines like social studies and English and so on. And the, we're kind of failing to examine what the root causes of those local shortages are and declaring that, well, the solution to that is to bring in people from out of state, when in reality, we have people in the state with those licenses. I'm happy with the language regarding the licensure for people from adjoining states. There's some very carefully crafted language here that we're going to enter into these agreements after determining that the rigor of the licensure requirements are commensurate with the rigor of Minnesota's requirements. I'm quite happy with that. I'm a little bit concerned as to how that's going to apply to our neighbor from the east as they seek to gut their requirements for licensure, but we'll have to deal with that when that happens. But we have provisions on the preceding pages for licensure from all of the rest of the states, not those that are our neighbors, in which the language requiring us to compare the rigor of their programs is removed. So, on the one hand, we're going to ensure that we compare that rigor for the neighboring states, but then we're just going to forget about that for all of the rest of the states, and that doesn't make sense to me, and there's some rather vague language in that section that is going to cause problems going forward for the Board of Teaching. And that's been one of our sources of problems in licensure for many, many years, is all of the duties that are piled on the Board of Teaching with vague requirements and left to interpretation there with no resources with which to do that. So, I am concerned about that. But I am quite happy that we've increased the funding. There's quite a lot of other good policy provisions in this bill going forward. When we were working on it, about 2/3 of the bill had some pretty good stuff in it, in the policy bill. So, I have mixed feelings about it, but thank you very much.
The gentleman from Hennepin, Representative Freiberg.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I agree with what's been said generally. I do think this is a much better bill than it came, certainly when it left the floor the first time, but also the conference committee report. I'm particularly pleased about the increase in funding on the formula. I do think that will help prevent teacher layoffs. This is something I'm feeling rather personally right now as the parent of a kindergartner who will be going into the public schools in my district. She will be starting kindergarten in three months. There is one provision, though, that I did want to talk about that does trouble me. This is a provision related to sales tax exemption for joint powers organizations. Now, one of the things the legislature did in 2013 was eliminate the sales tax when it was paid for by local governments, such as cities and counties. I think this was a logical thing to do. There's no sense for taxpayers, in essence, paying for these things twice. Because of an interpretation of the Department of Revenue, however, this was determined that that exemption did not apply to cities and counties that were that that exemption did not apply to cities and counties that were operating efficiently through what's called joint powers organizations. So in my district, the cities of Crystal and New Hope have a joint fire department. You know, by operating together, they're able to operate more efficiently. So it made very little sense that the sales tax exemption was not, it was in effect penalizing cities that were operating more efficiently by operating through joint powers organizations. So in 2014, myself and a couple other legislators introduced legislation to extend this exemption to joint powers organizations. One of those bills, like I said, I offered one. I was very happy that it became law. One of those bills was House File 2532. It was authored by Representative Zurwaz. I was a co-author of that because, you know, it's an important bipartisan issue. And I'm actually wondering if Representative Zurwaz would yield for a question.
The gentleman will yield, Representative Freiberg.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representatives Zurwaz.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, he's not here at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker. The other bill was House File 2703, which Representative Pugh was the author of. I'm wondering if Representative Pugh would yield for a question.
She will yield, Representative Freiberg.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Pugh, I guess, in my mind, I don't see the connection between the sales tax exemption for joint powers organizations and what is otherwise a pretty decent education bill. Could you explain to me why it is necessary to include a tax increase in this education bill?
The lady from Carver, Representative Pugh.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, too, did author that bill, and I can't answer that specific question, but I can say that it was a good bill, and the three of our bills were very much, very much the same. And I do see this as a bit of a disappointment for our joint powers entities, but they'll have plenty of time to plan for when they will receive that benefit. So I would be, you know, delighted to ask Representative Loon to speak to that, if she would, and I'm sure she will in her closing remarks.
The gentleman from Hennepin, Representative Freiberg.
Thank you, Representative Pugh, and thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, I'm glad to hear, I mean, I knew you did feel it was an important bill. I was glad that you worked on this. So, I mean, in essence, what this will be doing is delaying the sales tax exemption for one year, which will amount to a tax increase for people who live in those cities, because if they're operating a joint powers organization, they will have to, they'll be paying sales tax in those communities. So I'm hopeful that Representative Pugh, Representative Zurwaz, and myself can work together, at least in the next session. You know, I know amendments aren't being accepted in this right now, otherwise I probably would have offered one to get rid of this provision, because to me, it seems unnecessary, particularly when we have $1 billion surplus, or $2 billion surplus, $1 billion left on the table, to be imposing a tax increase for residents of cities and counties that are operating efficiently. So I'm hopeful it's something we can work on in the next session. Otherwise, I am happy with many of the education, the actual education provisions in this bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The gentleman from McLeod, Representative Grunhagen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker, members. I just want to start out and say I appreciate the work that has gone on to this bill, especially bipartisanly. Also, especially appreciate the additional money on the formula where school boards and superintendents can make the decision where the needs of their districts are as far as applying the money. The other thing I'd say is, before I make my next comments, I don't doubt anybody's commitment to a better future for our children here in the state of Minnesota. You know, in 16 years on the school board, I never I met many great individuals, committed and working for the best of the students, but I never met a person, regardless whether I agreed or disagreed with them, that didn't want the best for the children. And so, anyway, but I do have some strong concerns about this bill, okay? And one of them is the achievement gap, okay? To believe that preschool programs are going to close the achievement gap is simply a pipe dream. All the evidence shows that that will not. There's no evidence that it will. We know, now, I know there's some evidence that poor parents with a scholarship, that their children do benefit from preschool programs, and I understand and I want to support that, okay? But what reduces the achievement gap is a cut score, which we removed last biennium, and we're back to social promotion with the children, regardless of what you do. A cut score was reducing the achievement gap double-digit for Hispanic and minority students across the state. We've eliminated that in the previous biennium. Also, choice in education, and I'm talking about scholarships or vouchers. The empirical evidence is in, where vouchers have been implemented, academic scores go up for even the poorest students. That will change the achievement gap, not just piling more money onto a system that's failing the minority students. You know, according to the Minnesota Department of Education, 2014, 23 percent of black children, 23 percent members, can read up to grade level. That's a disgrace and a travesty. You combine that with the welfare system that destroys our families, and look at what's happening across our cities. And all we're doing, members, is piling more money onto that system. Well, I'm going to be the voice for the voiceless, the ones who don't have the money to come down here to get their way. And those are those students, and I did 13 years of jail ministry. I encourage you to do 13 years of jail ministry. Try not to get thrown into jail along the way. You'll find out, a lot of those prisoners can't read decent. Now, they're still responsible for their actions, but we are doing a disservice to them when we send them through a system where only 23 percent of them can read up to grade level. I will not support that. Even a moderate bill, like Representative Knoblox, which would have given parochial and homeschool and private school some relief in terms of their cost, was rejected in this session. When, members, are we going to start caring about all the students, not just the public school students? Let's help them have the advantages to make the choices, to build a better future for their children and grandchildren. I know you care. My prayer is that we will come together in a way that can help all students in the state of Minnesota. God bless.
The gentleman from Washington, Representative Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Hurtas yield to a question.
He will yield, the gentleman from Washington.
Representative Hurtas, you served as a mayor, I believe? Was it Greenfield, or, I'm sorry, is that correct?
Representative Hurtas.
That's correct.
Representative, Mr. Speaker, Representative Hurtas, you've expressed some pretty passionate responses or voices related to taxes. So how do your citizens, your constituents react to the idea of being taxed twice for the same thing?
Representative Hurtas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Shaw, and I guess I'm not clear on what you're referring to. What item are you talking about being taxed twice?
The gentleman from Washington, Representative Shaw.
Well, Mr. Speaker, Representative Hurtas, I'm referring to the joint powers agreement language to begin with, but I'll just make that as a generalized question. How would you feel if you walked into Home Depot and you got taxed twice for the exact same thing? You paid taxes twice on it. How would that, how do you respond to that?
The gentleman from Hennepin, Representative Hurtas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, Representative Shaw, it seems as though the Democrat math is if you don't fully fund inflation, that's a cut, but if you delay an exemption, that's a tax increase. This is not a new tax. It's just delay of implementation of a tax that was going to be phased out.
Mr. Speaker.
The gentleman from Washington, Representative Shaw.
Well, thank you. Maybe we'll try this again. Representative Hurtas, when I served on the Tax Committee, Democrats eliminated that tax. We wrote it out of the law and said, this shouldn't happen. That was Democrats. I was the author of a bill that actually repealed the business tax related to medical equipment. That was Democrats. And you're increasing revenue to the bottom line here with a tax increase, because that's what it is. When you bring your revenue into the budget, that's tax increases. How do your constituents feel about that?
Is the gentleman from Hennepin asking the gentleman from Hennepin to yield?
Yes.
The gentleman from Hennepin will yield, Representative Hurtas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, Representative Shaw, I know that you're trying to do some theater here in trying to emphasize the fact that you view this $26 million that is tucked into this education omnibus bill as a tax increase. I, like you, signed on to bills that offered relief for joint powers, as well as cities and counties. I viewed, in the wake of the last biennium, massive tax increases that were being placed upon cities and towns. I was very thrilled to get on board and offer $250 million of tax relief to our cities, townships, and counties. You've asked the question, how do our constituents feel about paying twice? They're not paying twice, but again, the deferment or the exemption is being deferred by an additional year. I guess the more appropriate question is, and most of the members of this entire body probably were unaware of how this happened, but it was really the negotiations that were done, to my best knowledge, by the leadership, Representative and Speaker Dowd, and Representative Peppin, Majority Leader Peppin, as well as members in the Senate. So, you know, that's not something that I'm going to vote against, the education omnibus bill, for the other good things that are in it. But, you know, I wish it were different, but we can all play games with the math and how things are done. But if you want to characterize me as being an individual who's having to have a double standard in terms of advocating for tax relief, I don't think that's a fair assessment, because I'm going to, I certainly wouldn't reject this entire omnibus bill over this one provision.
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Shaw.
There's, still, even after this budget is done, there's $1 billion on the bottom line, so we certainly didn't need that. Would Representative, Mr. Speaker, would Representative Peterson, are, yield to a question?
She will yield, Representative Shaw. Representative Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Peterson, could you give me a little bit of insight as to how your constituents and/or city councils feel about the, we'll call it the bring-back of the tax?
Representative Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, I thought we were talking about education right now, but I know that anybody that's in joint powers and they haven't had that exemption before, and as Representative Hurtas already explained, it will be implemented a year later, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative, if Representative Peterson would continue to yield.
She will yield, Representative Shaw.
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker, and Representative Peterson. I wish we were talking about education, because the fact is, there's a tax increase in the education bill, and I don't understand it. Can you explain to me how, do you know why there's a tax increase in the education bill when there was $2 billion on the bottom line to begin with? It's a $2 billion surplus, but there's a tax increase in this bill. This is the education bill, so we can say it's education, and I'm all for that. I'm glad we're back to a number that makes sense, but tell me, how does Lakeville feel about this? Representative Peterson.
Representative Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Shaw, again, it's not a tax increase, and it's a delay in an implementation of a tax decrease. Exemption.
Representative Shaw.
Well, I'll leave Representative Roz Peterson alone. I'm wondering if Chair Lucheski would yield to a question.
She will yield, Representative Shaw. Representative Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and, you know, the last couple of years I got to serve on the Tax Committee were some of the most educational, informational, and university-like moments of my life. And to my tax mentor, Representative Lucheski, could you explain to the body the difference between what is being characterized on the right and to what we might believe the reality is of this tax increase?
Representative Lucheski.
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker, and members, and Representative Shaw. This is an interesting debate we had in the middle of the night, a few days before we adjourned in regular session, members, and, you know, I'm going to vote for this bill, but there is a tax increase in this bill, and so for members who maybe have not served on the Tax Committee in either party, just a little bit of explanation about how that works. So an example might be, let's say that in the current, the session that we just passed, let's say the majority had cut the fourth-tier income tax increase that the Democrats had passed, and there certainly was the money to do that, to repeal the tax increases that the previous majority and the governor had supported to right the state. But let's say that it actually happened. The omnibus tax bill had repealed the fourth tier, and it was set to be cut, and people came forward and said, no, 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 we're not going to cut that tax, and then tried to say, that's not a tax increase. So just think about that for a minute. When there is a tax cut that is either on its way, happening, or coming, or underway, if you stop that tax cut, that is a tax increase. So to now say that when we were set to cut taxes for Minnesotans, it's a sales tax, it's not paid by governments, it's paid by our residents, if you are giving them a tax cut and you say, we are not going to do that tax cut anymore, we changed our mind, that is a tax increase. And I can tell you, members, I tried mightily with Governor Palenti to stop different tax expenditures, tax cuts, and instead buy other priorities, and Governor Palenti was very consistent for eight years and said, that is a tax increase. And it's okay, members, to vote for a tax increase if you believe in it, and to fund something you believe in, like this bill, and I am going to vote for this bill, but please, let's not kid ourselves, we're voting for a tax increase if you vote yes today.
Representative Shaw.
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Representative Lucheski. I'll just say this. My constituents really appreciate the fact that in the city I live in, in St. Paul Park, our property taxes went down. The levy was able to be dropped. And we have this big divide about urban, rural, you know, suburban, but I'll tell you what. When you go out to Clear City, Representative Miller, where they had a big deed grant that we were able to put into law in the last couple of years, any of the local government aid that went up, and you want to talk about taxes? I mean, brought this up before, but look at the percentage of the population that lives in one county alone in this state. Revenue is generated there. Highways are built from there. Thank you to those counties that send local government aid to my cities. I appreciate it very much, because it makes fire trucks affordable. It makes police officers available. I appreciate it. But make no bones about it, when we're buying seal coating between cities or other things, that's being taxed twice. It's off your property taxes, and then you're paying a tax on that again. This is a tax. Thank you for making the education bill better. I'll be supporting it today, too, but a tax is a tax.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Khan.
Mr. Speaker and members, I also intend to vote for this bill. It has certainly much improved, and I want to thank the people who have been in this body, who have been working on the issue of Americans learning foreign languages. We are way behind most other countries in the world in our encouragement of this. I will point out, I have four grandchildren growing up in Montreal with dual citizenship. They are expected to be fluent, not just exposed to, but fluent in two languages before they graduate elementary school, and fluent in a third language before they graduate high school. The oldest one, who's starting to make her choice, has, first choice has been Japanese for her third language, and when I asked her why, she said, it's really good for karate.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and members, and Phil Donahue, very much. I, um, the last month of this overtime special session has brought back a lot of memories for me of the last couple of years of Governor Palenti's term, in that it has felt very much like our legislature has focused way more on the small fight inside the dome. like our legislature has focused way more on the small fight inside the dome, the small chess game of you, if you will, of winning and losing, the small divisions that we have created among ourselves about where we live and who we represent and who's more important. And in doing that, I think we've in large part forgotten about the job that we need to do for Minnesotans, and this bill, for me, is emblematic of that. During the break, I've gone to visit a few places. I was up in Bemidji with Representative Purcell, where they have public pre-K in their school, and we visited with three different childcare providers, and we talked with them about how the childcare providers and the public preschool work together. And I heard a great story about how they are cooperating with one another and making sure that they're doing the best they can with the resources that they have to prepare the kids in that community for a great start and for our great future. I did hear from the childcare providers there about their struggles with ParentAware, and how difficult it has been to work with ParentAware to get what they need to get done with their other childcare providers, and this is coming from a four-star rated ParentAware childcare center. And so I think that when we are talking about and patting ourselves on the back about what we've achieved in this bill, there's a warning sign out there, right, that not everything is going all that well in the system that we're building, that we're banking on in terms of closing the achievement gap in early learning. I also went to visit a childcare center in North Minneapolis, very lovely place that serves exclusively low-income children, and they do have kids there that are taking advantage of our scholarships, but they did explain to me that once that $5,000 worth of scholarship runs out, that child's opportunity in that childcare center is over until the next year comes around, or unless they can cobble together some other kind of funding. So, you know, my largest concern about this piece of legislation is that it is not ambitious enough for Minnesotans and for our kids and for our future. Last night, I listened to a woman talk about her family's generational poverty. Now, she doesn't live in Minnesota, she's from Texas, but she told the story of her grandparents, who were from Arkansas and moved to Texas, and her parents, her grandparents had a fourth grade education. Her mom was born when her mother was 13 years old, and she had a high school education, and this woman who spoke last night had her first child when she was a teenager. And she worked very hard to put herself through community college, and she eventually graduated Harvard Law. That is the power of our American dream and our ability through education to build a better future, and I am concerned that this bill is just not ambitious enough in that goal, and at a time when there is such great opportunity for the people of Minnesota and such great opportunity in this budget, we decided to leave a billion dollars on the bottom line rather than do a little more in education. I am really grateful that this bill is finally meeting the target that we put in our minority report, that 2% and 2% on the formula. I am really grateful to Governor Dayton that he insisted, he insisted that we get to 2% and 2% for our schools, so we can catch them up, because they've been running behind inflation, and that's causing problems for our schools. But we are not doing nearly enough for early learning, we're not, and I know we're going to pat ourselves on the back and say we've increased funding for school readiness, and that's great, but it was at $12 million, so that's not much of an increase. And we've increased funding for scholarships, but you know, that was our, the first investment was in our last biennium, and even with funding at $100 million now, it's only going to scratch the surface of where we need to go. And let's remember that there are lots of things that we do for kids that are underfunded: Head Start, C cap, ECFE, school nutrition, home visiting, prenatal care. When we talk about our commitment to kids and we look at the measure of where we are, we're not really meeting the need, and I will say that it is evident to me that the top priority for this Republican majority is still a corporate tax cut. And we're keeping all that money on the bottom line so we can come back next year and try and do that again. And in order to do that, we're sacrificing our kids' future, and that's evident in this bill, and I'm so disappointed in that, because this is the year, this is our time, to show Minnesotans what we mean when we say we support our kids and our future, and this just isn't good enough. Thank you.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I wanted to share with you guys that I had the opportunity a few days ago to meet with the ambassador from Kenya, who was here to bring business and jobs to Kenya. But in the midst of that meeting, we talked a little bit about our educational system. And in Kenya, they have a huge investment in every child, beginning at birth, and the requirement that comes from, from the top administrators in Kenya is that every child will graduate out of high school, out of elementary at, by the time they're in eighth grade, speaking three languages, three languages. But more importantly, what I heard from the ambassador from Kenya was that by the age of three, by the age of three, every child is reading. Now, I didn't say they can identify letters and colors, they are reading by the age of three. That's the investment that comes from that country for every child. They have laid a mighty, mighty strong foundation by the time that that child reaches eighth grade, and that is an investment that we have to invest here in this state, a good, solid foundation, early, early in life, so by the time they reach eighth grade in high school, there's a foundation there. Whether or not education is free or not, they have a strong, strong foundation, which creates better outcomes. You know, because at the end of the day, we don't want to be representing, my buddy over there, you know, to be in prisons trying to reform young men and women. That's not the goal, to be in a prison, to be reforming. We want a solid foundation, and that is what early education does, is set a strong foundation. And I really didn't stand to speak about that, but I just couldn't let it go, because we need strong foundations. But I wanted to stand and say thank you. Thank you to Governor Dayton for his wisdom, for his concern, and his investment in a creative, innovative solution to closing the achievement gap, and this will be the only time I'm going to refer to achievement gap, because you know what, it's not really an achievement gap, it is an opportunity gap. Because when we talk about an achievement gap, we are putting the onus on that child to be successful. It is the opportunity for us as a state to invest in the lives of children. So, we missed this opportunity to, we missed the possibility of closing the opportunity gap. And so with investment in the promised neighborhood, I want to thank him for that, because this is not an urban issue about kids not achieving, being successful, this is a statewide concern, which is why I want to also thank the governor for investment in rural Minnesota, because children are not succeeding out in those rural communities too. So, for many of us who look at the achievement, at the opportunity gap, it is really just that, an opportunity for children to be successful within our educational system. It is the concept of the wraparound services that make a difference in the lives of family and children alike. When families are stabilized and have housing, children are able to study, focus, complete homework assignments, attend school on a regular basis, and therefore can do better in school, along with other support services. When we are able to look at educational achievement through many different lens, recognizing each and every child is different, and the circumstances are different, and sometimes unique, we can begin to invest differently. And this is what we did within this educational bill. We invested differently, with the hope of getting some different outcomes, because families, not just children, are struggling to stabilize and keep families and keep children focused within our system. So, this is what we did two years ago, and again, we're doing it this year through the leadership of Governor Dayton, and I also would like to thank my minority leader, Paul Thiessen, for his steady voice in looking out for those who are not being successful in many communities around the state, but also for the investment so much that is so needed within the St. Paul promised neighborhood. So, again, I won't talk long, but I do want to say thank you to the governor, thank you, Paul Thiessen, and thank you for this body of leaders who came to the conclusion that it is worth investing in every child's lives to create better outcomes. Thank you.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Davany.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. I too appreciate this bill, as it has come back from the governor's veto as a much improved bill, certainly over the GOP's initial proposal, which significantly underfunded our schools. Moms and dads across Minnesota, because the governor vetoed the initial weak attempt at funding your children's schools, you can be more assured that when your child goes back to school this fall, that the teachers who they learned from and loved this year will be back in those classrooms, ready and waiting for them again next year. You can be certain that the programs and opportunities that they benefited from, the programs and opportunities that excited them, that engaged them, that got them out of bed in the morning and got them to school, are going to be there again this fall. The bill the governor vetoed could not make that promise. This bill can. The increase in school readiness funding is particularly important, because there's lots of school districts across the state that already are offering public preschool opportunities that parents want, that parents choose, that parents respect, and that turn out kids who are better prepared for kindergarten. The Osseo School District already responds to the needs through its preschool program of 35% of the four-year-olds in that school district. But because we haven't funded it adequately, they have to take money from the older siblings to build the four-year-old program. Listen to the superintendent of Osseo as she tells you that if we fund four-year-old opportunities through school readiness and through a universal pre-K system, she can better take the funds that she's been stealing from the older kids and put it to the needs of low-income students throughout the district and throughout the grades to enhance student achievement and enhance student graduation. Moving forward more boldly on opportunities for four-year-olds closes the achievement gap and builds opportunities across the K-12 spectrum. We're starting down that path. It's one of the areas where there's more work to be done next year. There's more work to be done next year on some of the other shortcomings in this bill, like the failure to fund special education, to fund the educational needs of some of our most vulnerable students who also have the greatest potential for us. The bill does a good start on a number of areas, like concurrent enrollment, but parents, if you're looking for rigorous opportunities for your child, if you're looking to hold down the cost of college tuition for your child, this bill doesn't even fund 50% of what the University of Minnesota charges school districts to provide college and the schools opportunities to your children in high school, not even 50%. When you pair that up with the insufficient funding in the higher education bill that the GOP pushed through, you see higher college costs for Minnesotans, higher student loans, burdens for Minnesota college students going forward. So, on balance, it's a better bill coming back from the governor than it went there, it's a better bill for greater Minnesota, coming back from the governor with the alternative facility support that's in it that was initially denied by the majority, but it also lays out the work we have to do next year to make sure that we've got educational opportunity for all of Minnesota students. Thank you.
The member from Clay, Representative Markort.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker and members, and this is a much better bill than what left the House back in April. I do want to thank Governor Dayton, Lieutenant Governor Smith, Commissioner Casilius, and others who really championed to move the ball forward on education for our students and for our future. And that's in huge contrast to when, on April 24th, the House GOP, with their priorities, had a bill that increased education by 0.6 of a percent on the formula. And you heard superintendents and school officials around the state talking about how this was going to lead to huge teacher and staff layoffs, larger class sizes, less electives, more property taxes. And also at the time, the budget plan, if you remember, had $29 in tax cuts for every $1 for our students and our future. And with a $2 billion surplus, it's really unfortunate that Governor Dayton had to drag the House majority Republicans kicking and screaming to get to the point that we're at today. And I also know that Governor Dayton wanted to do more, but the House majority drew a line in the sand and said, you know what, we'll shut down government before we even give one more dime to education, even though $1 billion is on the bottom line. But the governor decided a shutdown is not best for the state, and I'm glad he took that move. There's a lot of good things in this bill. I do think the largest missed opportunity was the fact that this bill did not accept Governor Dayton's universal pre-K. We all know that if we're going to put $1 into education, the most valuable dollar we can put into education to close the achievement gap and build the world's best workforce is in early childhood education. And I think the early learning scholarships are an excellent program, and I think the investments there, as Representative Loon mentioned, are very, very good. But the fact of the matter is, that is only going to serve about 10,000 of our four-year-olds at best, when we have the resources we could invest to make sure all 57,000 four-year-olds have an education. So, we missed the opportunity to provide free, everyday pre-K for our students, and we also took away a choice away from hard-working, middle-class families to put their kids into free, everyday kindergarten, free, everyday pre-K. So, right now, if you are a single parent with one child, if you make more than $29,000, you do not have the choice to send your kid to free pre-K. If you are two working parents with two kids and you make over $44,000, you do not have the choice, because there's no universal pre-K, you were not given the choice to send your child to free, everyday pre-K. And the ones that suffer here are our hard-working, middle-class families, and that shouldn't be any surprise, because during the session, the House majority has put wealthy special interests ahead of our middle-class, hard-working families. According to the tax incident report that came out this year from the Department of Revenue, middle-class families pay 12% more of their income in state and local taxes than the wealthiest Minnesotans. Since 2002, according to the incident's report, for the wealthiest Minnesotans, the share of the total income has increased 27%. You know what has happened to the middle class during that same time since 2002? As far as a share of its income, it's gone down 10%. Wealthy up 27%, the middle class down 10%, while costs continue to rise. Childcare costs, if you go to in-home childcare costs, it's about $7,500 a year for a four-year-old. If it's a daycare center, it's about $11,000. But even at the $7,500, that's 10% of a hard-working, middle-class family's income, 10%. And yet, the House majority, because they denied Governor Dayton's universal pre-K, denied those hard-working, middle-class denied those hard-working, middle-class families that have a choice to send their kids to free everyday preschool. Tuition costs are going up for middle-class families. The Democrats, we froze them for two years, but under the Republican control now here in the House, tuition's going to go up. If you really want to benefit hard-working, middle-class families and put more money in their pocket, freeze tuition. Give these parents the option to universal pre-K. Property taxes since 2002 have doubled, even though in the last two years, the facts are on homeowners, renters, and businesses, taxes went down, but they're going to go back up. They're going to go back up, because there's no property tax relief anywhere in sight this session. If you really want to help hard-working, middle-class families and put more money in their pocket, provide them property tax relief. And we could talk about healthcare. We can talk about even going on a vacation. It costs more. I saw where the Grand Canyon, the last 10 years or so, just to get admittance to the Grand Canyon, has gone up 64%. So while middle-class families' incomes are stagnant, because it's all going up to the wealthy, everything else is going up. There's the squeeze. And the problem with that is that if middle-class families cannot develop the next generation, we don't get to the world's best workforce. That's the case. So Governor Dayton, the Democrats, we've been working hard for hard-working, middle-class families, trying to put more money in their pockets, trying to decrease the obstacles. But every step along the way, this session, including this education bill, the House Republicans have put obstacles in the way of hard-working Minnesotan families. No universal pre-K, let's not give them the choice. Higher property taxes, higher tuition, wanting to cut Minnesota Care. So the big missed opportunity is not doing Governor Dayton's universal pre-K. Not only is it educationally, we know a winner, but it also provides valuable relief and a choice, just a choice, to our middle-class, hard-working families. And you know, there's all this debate about preschool and should it be in daycare, private, public, whatever. There's all these studies. Throw out the studies. Let's ask the people who know their children the best, the parents. And you know what? I heard the same conversation with all-day, everyday kindergarten. Same thing. Oh, no, they're not right. We shouldn't do it. We shouldn't invest in that. Two years ago, 54% of our five-year-olds had access to free everyday kindergarten. So we let the parents decide. You know what it is today? 99.6% made the choice to put their kids into all-day, everyday free kindergarten. But we're not going to give the choice to parents on the universal pre-K. So I'm hoping next year, with a billion dollars left on the table, that we take a good and serious look at Governor Dayton's universal pre-K plan and move into the future and provide relief and provide benefits to middle-class Minnesotans, hard-working families. Thank you.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Mullery.
Members, when I came in January here, I really look forward to a great change in the way we are funding education this year. And I agree with the statements. This is an okay bill. There's a number of good things in it since Governor Dayton. Since it went off the floor here, it's really improved a lot. The 2% and 2% for K-12 is very good. I really want to thank Governor Dayton, and I know Representative Thiessen pushed hard for it, for the promised neighborhoods. And I'm glad to see it extended around the state, which was in my bill from last year. But it is a really disappointment, because all fall, I looked forward to the fact that everybody was running on early childhood, the governor and both parties. So I came here in January, and it was almost like July, there was so much hot wind about early childhood. And as session progressed, it just disappeared. We have $2 billion this year, with a billion left on the bottom line. We are only putting in 6% of the total $2 billion into early childhood, which everybody ran on. I would challenge every one of you to find me an area of the budget that can produce 7 to 1, 10 to 1, 15 to 1 returns on investment as early childhood when it's done right. We started off Health and Human Services budget. That is a great amount of the money that actually should be put into early childhood, because a lot of the programs are there. There isn't, there's almost zero, it's something like .3 tenths of 1% in the Human Services bill on helping early childhood brain development. That's pathetic. Then we come to this bill. Did it make up for that at all? Of course not. In this bill, as I said, we are putting only in 6% of the $2 billion that we have. For the portion of brain development, 95% of a person's brain development occurs, and under our budget now, even with this advancement, we're under 3% of our education funding when 95% of their brain development happens. One person actually stood up this year and said, I am going to keep my word on early childhood. That was Governor Dayton, who offered 700, no, 600 to 700 million, I believe it was, that he was requesting for early childhood total. We are getting almost nothing of that, and therefore, it is very hard, when we are passing up this huge opportunity to do the most we can for the state of Minnesota out of the $2 billion surplus, and we're basically turning our back on it. So even though the bill is okay, it really makes it hard to vote when we're passing up what we could do for the future of all of Minnesotans.
The member from Blue Earth, Representative Cornish.
I finally couldn't take this anymore. This, wake up, press corps, I'm going to give you a few tidbits here. You sit here and listen to the Democrats, I think you would rather take money and throw it down a rat hole than give it back. I mean, there isn't any bill this year that you wanted, didn't want to spend more money on. I had the most generous target of anybody. You thanked me, you voted for it, but every one of you said, I wish you could have spent more. Now, bill after bill comes up, and you want to spend more and more. I just, I can't believe it. And this wacky idea about pre-K, you're looking for somebody that don't believe in pre-K? Tony Cornish, District 23B. Ever since Art Rolnick started this weird rumor about 7 to 1, you know how many times I've heard that? All these state agencies say the same thing. You give us $1, and we'll give you 7 back. What a bullhonky, like Representative Frombemidji said. It hasn't been true in any case, and it isn't true in pre-K. It's a great babysitting service, but you have no empirical evidence to prove that pre-K doesn't wear off by third or fourth grade. Our schools didn't even want it. I go back in my district, they didn't want it. My family didn't want it. Your kids are better off at home than in pre-K. Fine, send them to kindergarten, but this rumor about pre-K and trying to beat it into our heads that it's a good thing. Anyway, I would just wanted to give my closing speech on all the bills today, because when I get up and we're just about to close, they always give me heck and caucus. They said, Cornish, when you stood up and you gave your closing speech, five more Democrats popped up like mushrooms. So I thought I'd cover it all now, but I can't believe, for those back in TV land, you're seeing a new word today that the Democrats are using, they're calling it "investment." That's the new word for tax and spend. They're calling it "investment." Well, I'm tired of their kind of "investment." Do this exercise when you get home tonight. If you hear the word "investment" or "tax" or "spend," close your eyes and think of those three words. And then envision, what animal do you see standing behind you? An elephant or a donkey? Thank you very much.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Carlson.
Well, as you might guess, there's going to be a different point of view here. I couldn't disagree with Representative Cornish and his comments more. I spent 34 years in the classroom, and some of you have heard me say this before, and when I would see some of my students who were in senior high, and I taught mainly seniors struggling, I would always say, gee, if they would have only gotten off to a better start in the early grades. That's the way I started out in my mindset, because that's the way the system worked. Well, as we began to look more and more at that issue, preschool became more and more important in my mind. Representative Wagenius and I, I remember years ago, back in the early '90s, came into my office. I was Chair of the Education Committee back then, and she had an idea for funding all-day kindergarten on a limited basis, and the two of us took that cause up, and we got it through conference committee, signed by the governor. It was only 50 sites, based on free and reduced lunch, but we got it started. One of the more conservative members on that conference committee said to me, Representative Carlson, you're just trying to get this started. I know your goal is to have it statewide. And I said, well, that's no secret, that's my goal. I didn't know it was going to take about 20 years, however, before that were to happen. But we did finally get all-day kindergarten. It's been very successful. St. Louis Park was on the news during the legislative session. They're redoing their first-grade curriculum, because the all-day kindergarten has been so successful for those children. Well, now, here we are on the threshold, and it's too late now for this year, but I hope next year on the table is universal all-day for four-year-olds. I think we'll see the same results. And Representative Cornish, there is evidence that there are students who become much more successful when they get that early educational opportunity. And so I would hope that the Chair of the Education Committee next year, when we have an education bill, and we always do, would give serious consideration to universal education for four-year-olds. And by the way, I got kind of beat up on the kindergarten issue years ago, because when I introduced the bill, I didn't have the word "voluntary" in there. And so there's one radio station, I won't identify its call letters, but the call-ins were, Representative Carlson has made it sound like I was going to try to snatch these little children out of their mother's arms. And I inserted the word "voluntary," and that solved two issues, because it was some of the rhetoric that we're hearing here today. And that was, we don't have space, and you're going to really require that, and what thing and another. And so with the word "voluntary," it became voluntary for the first 50 sites. Every one of them took advantage of it. It also became voluntary for the parents. So that just so happened, two of those 50 sites were in my district, or in my, the school district that I partly represent, the Robinsdale School. So I called the two principals once it was operating, and I said, how many parents turned down that opportunity? None at either school site. So that goes back to what Representative Markort was talking about, the participation rate. I think he said 99.9%. And I think we'll see the same thing happen for the four-year-olds and the same kind of success.
The member from Carver, Representative Nash.
Mr. Speaker, members, thank you. I wanted to respond to the lamentations about the lack of universal pre-K, and I won't use mushrooms or bullhockey like Representative Cornish, but I'm going to speak out about the fact that I'm glad that that is not in here, and here's why. And many of you may have seen some of the postings I've had, and letters I've shared, and information I've shared in various outlets. For several of my districts, the school superintendents told me that after the money that would have been provided by the state program that the governor was going to offer, they still would have had to have levied $17.5 million to cover that. They had no schoolroom, they had no teachers, they had no materials. They said, time and time again, please, Representative Nash, don't go down without a fight on this. And I, for one, am glad we're not going to have to talk about this. This is not something that folks, middle-class members in my district, hard-working, middle-class families, they called me, they emailed me, they reached out to me on Facebook, they said, Jim, make sure you give a good fight for this. I talked to daycare providers, private daycare providers, they all said, this would ruin our business, people who pay taxes, people who provide jobs for more middle-class families. This is not something that is free. This would have cost the citizens of Carver County millions of dollars, millions. This is not something that we should take trivially. You know, as a father of six kids, I take the education of my kids very, very seriously. But universal pre-K, or free pre-K, as it's been called, is not free. Millions and millions of dollars was going to be levied against the people of Carver County, and I'm glad that we actually prevented it from happening. So Speaker Dowd, Leader Pepin, thank you for holding the line. This was not something that the people of Carver County could put up with. Thank you.
The member from St. Louis, Representative Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just want to clarify a few comments that have been spoken today about the rate of return on early education. So James Heckman is a Nobel Prize-winning economist, and actually, pretty conservative economist, and he did a very thorough study on the rate of return on early education. And he found a $7 return for every dollar invested. So that, Representative Cornish and Representative Grunhagen, is where that information comes from. And you may disagree, but he is a Nobel Prize-winning economist. So I frankly believe that he did a very thorough research, and we should use that information in making decisions. And from a personal point of view, my son, who is six, Otis, had, has been in preschool, actually was in daycare since the age of five months old, because my husband and I both have to work to pay our bills, but he is now in kindergarten, and because of his pre-K education that he was lucky enough to have, he can now read in kindergarten and do very, very high-level math. So, and he's in public school, so he's benefiting. We need to invest in our kids in Minnesota, so we can be a strong state in terms of our economy, and we can compete globally. So I think it's a good investment, and it's really unfortunate that we're not spending more on educating children. And it is shameful. So when I hear people say, well, it's not effective, they should just stay home, I mean, I can't believe people are saying that. Educated people here are saying that, just stay home. I mean, I don't have time, frankly, to spend a lot of time with my kids, educating them if they stayed home. They're getting more from being in school with licensed teachers in public school. And it's important that we read to them and do other things, but frankly, spending money on education is important, but there are many other things that matter if you want to close the achievement gap. And I don't see us addressing all of those other things, socioeconomic issues, that we could have addressed in this session. It just seems like we spent more on corporate interests, and we only passed 77 bills and omnibus bills. I just frankly, as a new legislator, I feel like we didn't do a lot.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Thiessen.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will Representative Nash yield for a question?
He will yield. Representative Thiessen.
Thank you. I just wanted to know what your superintendents thought and your property taxpayers thought with the bill that Representative Loon first brought off the floor that only raised the formula by .6%, which was going to cause... formula by 0.6%, which was going to cause significant property tax increases, much bigger than you were talking about in your last speech.
Mr. Speaker, Representative Thiessen, you know, the superintendent in my district was interested mostly in preventing the universal pre-K that your side was bringing forward. They were absolutely terrified about the fact that that could be shoved down their throats, and that they would have to levy $17.5 million on the people of Waconia District 110. Moreover, there were other superintendents in the same area that were terrified about the taxes that would be foisted on them by the universal pre-K.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, he didn't answer my question, because we know the answer is that they were more terrified of the fact. And maybe you didn't talk to your superintendents about the bill that Representative Loon brought to the House, and that you voted for originally, that only increased funding by half a percent. Because we know, I've been across the state talking to superintendents about that in just about every part of the state, and superintendents were up in arms with the Republican proposal for education in this state. And let's not make any mistake, and Representative Cornish, I hope the press are paying attention now. And thank you for giving the best speech for the Democrats on education that is given on the floor tonight, today. We'll be seeing that video quite a bit, I imagine. But the fact of the matter is, superintendents in every part of the state were terrified of the bill that you passed. And that is the Republican bill. I hope the press is paying attention to this. The Republican bill, the Republican proposal for education in this state, was a half a percent increase on the formula. That's what you all stand for. That's what Representative Loon stands for. That's what everybody on that side that voted for this bill stands for. And thank God for Governor Dayton, for dragging you kicking and screaming, so that we could get two and two on the formula. Representative Miller, will you yield for a question?
He will yield. Representative Thiessen.
Thank you. Representative Miller, have you talked to your superintendents, and are they happy that we're now at 2% and 2% on the formula, so that we can provide some education funding for our students in your district?
Representative Miller.
Mr. Speaker, Representative Thiessen, I've been in constant contact with my superintendents, my teachers, principals, parents, students. I'm not sure how much time you spend in your district talking to these people. They've been satisfied with the work that I've done for them this year. Thank you.
Representative Thiessen.
Thank you. Representative Miller, yield.
He will yield. Representative Thiessen.
Thank you. I'm glad that you've talked to them. So, are they pleased? Are those parents and teachers and superintendents pleased that we're now at 2% and 2% on the formula?
Representative Miller.
Mr. Speaker, Representative Thiessen, as I said, I've talked with my superintendents, my teachers, principals, parents, students, and they've been satisfied with the work that I've done. Thank you.
Representative Thiessen.
Will Representative Miller yield for a question?
He will yield. Representative Thiessen.
Are they happy that we're at 2% and 2% on the formula? I understand that you've talked to them. Now, I'm wondering what the substance of that conversation was. Are you happy, are they happy that you're 2 and 2 on the formula?
Representative Miller.
Mr. Speaker, Representative Thiessen, I've talked with my superintendents, I have talked with my principals, teachers, parents and students, and they've been satisfied with the work that I've done. Thank you.
Representative Thiessen.
Will Representative Miller yield for a question?
He will yield. Representative Thiessen.
Who wrote that line for you?
Representative Thiessen.
That was my question.
Representative Miller.
Mr. Speaker, Representative Thiessen, I'm not exactly sure why the personal insult came.
It wasn't a personal insult?
You've had, I believe I have the floor, Representative Thiessen, okay. It's been kind of funny this year. I know it's your job to badger people, to try and come up with conundrums and stuff like that. I believe I've answered your question, and because I'm not answering it the way that you wish, you choose to badger me. And I don't accept that, I don't respect that. I think it's a disgrace to do that here on the House floor.
Representative Thiessen.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I was actually asking a fairly simple question, Representative Miller. And that is, are your school districts, your teachers, principals, students, the folks that you've talked to, are they more pleased with 2% and 2% on the formula, instead of half a percent and half a percent on the formula? It's a very simple question. I'm not trying to, I'm just asking the question. So, if he would yield, I'd like him to answer that question, Mr. Speaker.
He will not yield. Representative Thiessen.
Okay, well, I take it from that, that people, I don't know what I take from that, quite frankly. Will he yield for one more question?
He will not yield. Representative Thiessen.
Okay, because I was just going to ask him if he would stand up and thank Governor Dayton for moving from 0.5% to 2% on the formula. We don't have to get into, this isn't aimed at you, Representative Miller. I don't really care, quite frankly. But the fact of the matter is, that it's a pretty simple question, and the fact that you're not willing to answer a question, I think is more telling perhaps than anything else. The bottom-line members, though, I mean, the point to be made here is that the Republican proposal, right now, initially, what the Republicans stood for in education, what Representative Peterson stood for in education, what Representative Miller stood for in education, what Representative Herta stood for in education, what Representative Bennett stood for in education, was a half a percent increase on the formula, which would have led, undoubtedly, in every superintendent in the state, every parent in the state, every teacher in the state knows it, to layoffs, to larger class sizes, to program reductions. That's what the Republicans are about. And thank God for Governor Dayton, again, for having you bold, kicking and screaming to a budget that is actually going to do something for people. I also do want to point out the folk, you know, there's a lot of discussion, and Representative Loon walked through this in her introduction about the changes in the bill, and taking pride in it. A lot of discussion, though, about making sure we get the resources to those families in this state that need them, to make sure that that opportunity gap that Representative Moran talked about was covered. But the fact of the matter, everything that she listed, whether it's around Indian education or investing in Head Start, the Promise Neighborhoods, ELL, those are things you all rejected. Those are things Representative Loon rejected, those are things that the majority of this House rejected. Those are things that are actually going to make a difference for those families. But you rejected every one of those in the budget that you passed. And so, your talk about wanting to close this opportunity gap with that $153 million bill that you passed rings really, really hollow, and Minnesotans understand that. And you can do everything you want to, to try to spin it some other way, but that's the fact of the matter. And I also want to dwell on something that Representative Markort hit on, because this is important. How many people in this room think a single mom with two kids making $35,000 a year is Nobody raised their hand. But what you're talking about in your budget, when Representative Loon gets up and says, we want to target those resources that those folks that most need it, she's throwing that mom, that single mom with two kids making $35,000, under the bus. Because that mom won't qualify for those scholarships that you're talking about. Those scholarships are important. And I think that all of the above approach is important, and we supported them two years ago. We actually made the first major investment in those scholarships in the history of this state. And so, I think that they're important. But we could have done so much better. So, those hard-working, middle-class families, those folks making $35,000, $40,000, $50,000 a year, you're saying they don't matter, that the investment that they could have in a high-quality education system, a high-quality pre-K system, that they don't matter. They're going to have to keep struggling along, and along, and along. That's what Republicans stand for. So, this bill, thanks to Governor Dayton, and make no mistake, it's only because of Governor Dayton that we have the bill that we have here today. Thanks to Governor Dayton, we are making improvements. But what you're doing is leaving thousands, tens of thousands of kids from middle-class and lower-income families behind with this bill, because of an ideological fixation on something that I don't quite understand. So, I'm going to be voting no on this bill, because the fact of the matter is, with a $2 billion budget surplus, with leaving, well, less than a billion now, 815 million or so on the bottom line, so you can do your corporate tax cuts next year, we could have used a little bit of that money, we could have used 80 million of it, we could have frozen college tuitions for those middle-class families across this state. We could have done that, but you chose to save that money, so you can give big corporate tax cuts to your friends next year. And we could have invested in early childhood education that would have helped tens of thousands of more families. But you chose not to do that, because you want to keep that money for special interest tax giveaways next year. So, this bill has improved, thanks to Governor Dayton, no thanks to the Republican Caucus, which started out with a bill that would have resulted in layoffs, bigger class sizes. I think the reason Representative Miller didn't want to answer the question is because he knows that that's the fact. He knows that his superintendent, and the folks out in his district, and his parents and his teachers, didn't think that the bill that the Republicans passed was a very good bill. He knows that in his heart, and we all know that that's the case. But what we're doing today, we've made progress, thanks to Governor Dayton, but we could have done so much better. So, we've wasted an opportunity here to actually transform the opportunity for tens of thousands of kids across this state, and that's a shame. I'm going to be voting no.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Pepin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Thank you, Representative Loon, for your hard work on this. I'd just like to respond to a few of Representative Thiessen's comments. Representative Thiessen, you talked about the bill that was passed, and I think you, maybe you didn't quite read the bill, the bill that we passed, the last day or the last couple days' session, I can't remember, actually put $400 million additional dollars in addition to the base, which would have been about $1.3 billion. And you may be talking about our original bill. That was still over a billion-dollar increase in spending. I think it was 157 million added on to the 16, 17 base. So, that would have been more than a billion increased spending, even had that bill passed. And I know you have an insatiable desire to increase spending. I understand that that's, you represent Minneapolis, and, you know, the leadership is Minneapolis-St. Paul, and you're working to represent that. But you should at least be honest with the facts. The bill that passed, the bipartisan bill that we passed with the Senate, was $1.3 billion over current spending. By any measure, that is a very large increase in spending. When the governor vetoed the bill over his insistence on universal pre-K, which I might add, the schools didn't want, the school districts didn't want, none of my school districts wanted that. I've heard from many members that their school districts didn't want it. And why didn't they want it? Because it's an unfunded mandate. They don't have the space, they're still implementing their all-day kindergarten, they don't have the space. And what would have happened, Representative Markort? Property taxes would have gone up, because they would have had to find a way to make the space for this. You know what? You know, Representative Markort, I know that you're concerned about rural Minnesota, and I forgot to mention your other point on the farm equipment tax and your vote for that. So, rural Minnesota can thank you for your vote on the farm equipment repair tax from last year, but I digress a little bit. But, members, this is a good bill. The other thing I want to point out is that when the governor did veto this bill over pre-K, it was an interesting conversation. When we went there, Representative Thiessen, you were asking about what's how schools, were they one of the money? The schools wanted money on the formula. I don't know that anybody can deny that. I literally did not get one email, not one email, from a constituent saying that we need to spend more money, if we're going to spend more money, that it should go to universal pre-K. Because parents want a choice at that age. And if the school districts got more money, they said where they wanted was the formula. So, let me make it very clear, it was the House Republicans that fought for these additional dollars to go on the formula. And the reason it is 2 and 2 is because the House Republicans fought to put those extra dollars on the formula. The governor insisted the extra dollars go to universal pre-K, an unfunded mandate that the school districts didn't want, that would have cost schools more money, it would have taken money out of the classrooms. And you can deny if you want, but I think you all know, from the response you got from your school districts, some of you share school districts with us, and you know exactly what kind of response you got from this. So, let me be very clear, we also fought for scholarships. That also wasn't where the governor wanted to spend the dollars. So, we fought for this 2 and 2% increase. We felt that our initial, our original bill was over $1 billion on new investment in education. It was a very good bill. It wasn't enough for the insatiable appetite of the Democrats. The $17 billion that we spent on education isn't enough. So, we listened to the people, we listened to the schools, and they said, if you're going to spend more on education, more than the $1.3 billion that the governor vetoed, then you should fight for the money and the formula. And that is exactly what we did. We listened to the people. And Representative Loon, thank you for all your hard work on this. Mr. Speaker, yours as well. This is a bill that we can be proud of, because we listened to what the schools wanted, we listened to what the parents of Minnesota wanted, and we put together a good bill. Thanks, members.
The member from Mille Lacs, Representative Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, members, I think we have to face reality, finally, listening to this debate that's been going on. This is about the education of our children, our children. And who is primarily responsible for that? Our parents and our teachers. And we have had all this debate and not said one word about the magnificent work that our teachers have just completed doing in our classrooms this year and in prior years, based on the expectations that we have placed on them. It is not about what we do in this legislature that makes a difference. It is what happens in that classroom and in the home. And over the years, since we began our standards-based education, we have allowed our teachers to take that challenge and close the achievement gap, yes, very gradually, but we are doing it. You take a look at the statistics that come from the Department of Education at the end of every school year, or at the beginning of every school year, as each teacher, like I was, looked forward to, to seeing that improvement, that increase in learning that's occurred among our children, because of great teachers. So, I want to say today, thank you, teachers, for the hard work that you've done. Teachers like Representative Bennett, who spent years with kindergarten children, who sometimes aren't even able to tie their shoes or know when to use the bathroom. They come to us at all different levels, members, and teachers get them to that stage. And then, our parents, who make those decisions about whether or not the children should be ready to go to a preschool, or stay home, or be in some other setting, maybe with grandma and grandpa. Let's get back to reality, because it is not about what we do in this place. It is about what we allow to happen, because of effective teaching, because of improved learning, and the great standards that we've developed, the good testing that does go on, that does show improvement in all of our minority communities, as well as our white. All of our children are improving. The achievement gap is closing, and it's closing, as I said, because of what goes on in the classroom and in the home. And thank you, children, for being attentive students. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just had to say that, as your former teacher, who worked hard. Thank you.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Loon.
Thank you, members. And I'm going to use a handheld mic. Apparently, some of you had difficulty hearing me, so, can you hear me in the back? All right, thank you. Thank you. And I want to thank all the members for their contributions for the debate. It's been long, so I'm going to be brief. I'm going to start with a list of thank-yous. Omnibus bills take a lot of work, and they take the efforts of a lot of people. And I would just be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to thank Representative Erickson, the Chair of the Policy Committee, Representative Mariani, the ranking member there, my ranking member on the Finance Committee, Representative Mary Murphy, and our wonderful staff, both partisan and nonpartisan. Jody Withers, Committee Administrator, Doreen Caines, our Committee Legislative Assistant, Gabrielle Haughey, our Republican researcher, Jessica Nyman, a DFL researcher, our House Nonpartisan Staff, Tim Strom, Lisa Larson, and Melissa Johnson with House Fiscal, the Senate Nonpartisan Staff, Bjorn Arnason, Jay Williams, and Ann Marie Butler, and also, Senator Uyghur and his very fine staff, Nancy Livingston and Caitlin Snyder. You know, this really was a good effort on the part of a lot of people, and I want to thank so much, so many people, but specifically, the members who serve on education committees. I know we all take what happens to our children in our schools very, very seriously, and these members devote a lot of time into learning very complicated education formulas, a myriad of programs, and how they work in the schools that are so different across the communities of our great state of Minnesota. So, I want to thank you all for those efforts. You know, I'm just going to address very quickly some of the criticisms launched here. And, you know, different priorities, different ideas when it comes to education funding. But, you know, whether you agreed or disagreed with the bill that the House Republicans put forward, and the conference committee process and product, and this bill today, the House Republicans that have shaped the bill have always put a priority with the money that we had available to spend on the formula. 65% or more, no matter how much we had to spend, was devoted to the formula. And I just want to make clear, for the record, that, you know, when the governor put forward his budget bill, initially, 1% each year on the his budget bill, initially, 1% each year on the formula, 1 and 1. And that was out of about $700 million she proposed spending, 1 and 1. When the revised budget came forward after the February forecast, still 1 and 1 on the formula. My good friends in the Senate, with a much higher target originally than we had, of about $370 million, still 1 and 1 on the formula. So, make no mistake about it, the priority of putting money on the formula in the schools came from the majority members of this body who emphasized it over and over again with the money that we had to spend. That was our number-one priority, and we honored it with every bill that we put forward. I'm pleased that we're able to do 2% and 2%. More than our schools were able to get in the current biennium with even more money spent in education, because that is our priority. You know, some concerns and observations raised about whether or not we do scholarships or go to universal pre-K. You know, I would just say beware the politician that comes to you with a great free program. Folks, nothing's free. Taxpayers have to put up a lot of money to provide the opportunities that we do, and we rightly should for our children. I know I would sacrifice anything for mine, I would dare say everybody in this room and folks listening would say the same. They're our most precious resource. But no matter what amount of money was devoted to a start down the idea of universal pre-K, it didn't fully fund that program. And as Representative Nash pointed out, and many of our districts talked about, school facilities, equipment, buses, all of those kinds of things that would add up into doing this kind of huge endeavor, fall on those middle-class families through their property taxes. They are not paid for in the proposals that we'll put forward by the governor or others. Property taxes falling on middle-class families. So we can debate the merits of it, but just remember, folks, that, you know, there is no such thing as a free initiative coming from your government. It comes out of your pockets, it comes out of the pockets of taxpayers. And that's why it's so important to talk about targeting resources to those who need it most. You know, it's been a very, a wonderful spring for me, once we finished with session and I was over here for some of the special session negotiations. In between that, my oldest daughter graduated from college, and my youngest daughter graduated from high school. Both products of public schools, all of their schooling until college, done really, really well. So proud of my girls, so proud of the school system that they go to. And, you know, I just hope that we all keep in mind that, as Representative Erickson said, it really gets down to those individual relationships, the qualities of your teachers, how parents are reinforcing that education at home. We can provide some money and opportunities so schools can have the resources and that, but it's that, those individual relationships, that commitment, those quality instruction and the quality support from parents at home that are really key to making sure that we're getting our children to where they need to be. So, you know, no bill is perfect. And so for members looking for the perfect bill, I don't think you'll ever find it, not in this body. There's things that I'd like to see as well, that we weren't able to achieve. But this is a very good product of a lot of voices, a lot of intellect, a lot of input, and a lot of compromise to do good things for our students. Early education, getting the kids with probably the most difficult start in life off to a better start through opportunities. And we're doing that in a way that helps preserve parent choice in that matter. Representative Grunhagen, to your choice, to some of your comments, we're not going to tell parents who don't have the means, here is your preschool program for your children. No, we say, you can choose from any quality program. If you want that to be at your school, you can do that. If you want it to be at your neighbor's high-quality daycare down the street in her home, you can do that. If you want it to be at your church that runs a great preschool program, you can do that. Our parents deserve that, and our children deserve that. And we've preserved this in this bill. You know, the $5,000 cap that Representative Murphy mentioned, that goes away July 1st. That goes away July 1st, and the Commissioner's going to have the ability to set the rates based on market surveys that were done. So we're going to be able to provide the help that these families need, and thousands and thousands of children are going to get a great start towards getting ready for kindergarten through this bill. So, members, I thank you again for the debate, and I strongly urge you to support this very good education bill.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the role on the final passage of House File Number One. And again, remember, members, please keep conversations quiet so that the staff can hear the votes.
Albright.
Aye.
Albright votes aye. Allen.
Aye.
Allen votes aye. Anderson M., excuse. Anderson P.
Yea.
Anderson P. votes aye. Anderson S., excused. Anzels.
No.
Anzels votes no. Applebaum, excused. Atkins.
Aye.
Atkins votes aye. Backer.
Aye.
Backer votes aye. Baker.
Aye.
Baker votes aye. Barrett.
Aye.
Barrett votes aye. Bennett.
Aye.
Bennett votes aye. Bernardi.
Aye.
Bernardi votes aye. Bly.
Aye.
Bly votes aye. Carlson.
Aye.
Carlson votes aye. Christiansen.
Aye.
Christiansen votes aye. Clark.
Yes.
Clark votes aye. Concedine.
Aye.
Concedine votes aye. Cornish.
Aye.
Cornish votes aye. Daniels.
Aye.
Daniels votes aye. Davids.
Aye.
Davids votes aye. Daphne.
Aye.
Daphne votes aye. Dean M.
Aye.
Dean M. votes aye. Dean R., excused. Detmer.
Aye.
Detmer votes aye. Dill. 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 Dreskowski, excused. Earhart.
Yes.
Earhart votes aye. Erickson.
Aye.
Erickson votes aye. Fabian.
Aye.
Fabian votes aye. Fenton.
Aye.
Fenton votes aye. Fisher.
Aye.
Fisher votes aye. Franzen.
Aye.
Franzen votes aye. Freiberg.
Yes.
Freiberg votes aye. Garofalo.
Pass.
Garofalo, pass. Green. Green votes aye. Grunhagen.
Aye.
Grunhagen, pass. Gunther.
Aye.
Gunther votes aye. Hackbarth.
Aye.
Hackbarth votes aye. Halverson, excused. Hamilton.
Yes.
Hamilton votes aye. Hancock.
Aye.
Hancock votes aye. Hanson.
Yes.
Hanson votes aye. Hausmann.
Aye.
Hausmann votes aye. Heinzeeman.
Aye.
Heinzeeman votes aye. Hertas.
Aye.
Hertas votes aye. Hillstrom.
Aye.
Hillstrom votes aye. Hoppy.
Aye.
Hoppy votes aye. Hornstein.
Aye.
Hornstein votes aye. Hortman, excused. Howe.
Aye.
Howe votes aye. Isaacson.
Aye.
Isaacson votes aye. Johnson B. Johnson B. Johnson B. Johnson C.
Aye.
Johnson C. votes aye. Johnson S.
Aye.
Johnson S. votes aye. Khan.
Aye.
Khan votes aye. Kelly.
Aye.
Kelly votes aye. Keel.
Aye.
Keel votes aye. Knoblock.
Aye.
Knoblock votes aye. Koznick. Koznick, pass. Creshaw.
Aye.
Creshaw votes aye. Lane.
Aye.
Lane votes aye. Lachesky.
Yes.
Lachesky votes aye. Lesch.
No.
Lesch votes no. Liebling.
Aye.
Liebling votes aye. Lean.
Aye.
Lean votes aye. Lilly.
Aye.
Lilly votes aye. Loeffler.
Aye.
Loeffler votes aye. Loon.
Aye.
Loon votes aye. Lunen.
Aye.
Lunen votes aye. Lucero.
No.
Lucero votes no. Luick.
Aye.
Luick votes aye. Mack, excused. Mahoney.
Aye.
Mahoney votes aye. Mariani.
Sweet.
Mariani votes aye. Markward.
Aye.
Markward votes aye. Mason.
Aye.
Mason votes aye. McDonald.
Aye.
McDonald votes aye. McNamara.
Aye.
McNamara votes aye. Maline.
No.
Maline votes no. Metza.
Metza.
Metza. Miller.
Yes.
Miller votes aye. Moran.
Yes.
Miller votes aye. Mullery.
Aye.
Mullery votes aye. Murphy E.
No.
Murphy E. votes no. Murphy M.
Aye.
Murphy M. votes aye. Nash.
Aye.
Nash votes aye. Nelson.
Yes.
Nelson votes aye. Newberger.
No.
Newberger votes no. Newton.
Aye.
Newton votes aye. Nornis.
Aye.
Nornis votes aye. Norton.
Aye.
Norton votes aye. O'Driscoll.
Aye.
O'Driscoll votes aye. O'Neal.
Aye.
O'Neal votes aye. Palowski.
Aye.
Palowski votes aye. Peppin.
Aye.
Peppin votes aye. Purcell.
Aye.
Purcell votes aye. Petersburg.
Aye.
Petersburg votes aye. Peterson.
Aye.
Peterson votes aye. Pearson.
Aye.
Pearson votes aye. Pinto.
No.
Pinto votes no. Poppy.
Aye.
Poppy votes aye. Pew.
Aye.
Pew votes aye. Quam.
Pass.
Quam, pass. Rarick.
Aye.
Rarick votes aye. Rosenthal.
Aye.
Rosenthal votes aye. Runbeck.
Aye.
Runbeck votes aye. Sanders.
Aye.